Once again, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Village of Bartlett Committee, the whole meeting for March 1, 2022. I call this meeting to order, and again, ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Danny?
Here.
Gansey?
Here.
Gunstein?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
President.
Swansky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. First item on our committee meeting, city building and zoning, Chairman Hopkins?
Thank you, President Wallace. There's two items on our agenda tonight. The first one is the grasslands final subdivision and PUD plat and final PUD plan phase one. The petitioners are requesting approval of a final subdivision and PUD plat and final PUD plan for phase one of grassland subdivision. The final subdivision and final PUD plan identifies three PODs or neighborhood proposed for residential development containing a total of 231 dwelling units. POD one would consist of 81 single-family homes. POD two would consist of 60 active adult ranch homes with POD consisting of 90 active adult duplexes. The northwest corner of Route 59 in West Bartlett, block 197, is designated for commercial use and will be developed in future during phase three. With that, the plan, the ZBA approved the plan, and we're going to review this and possibly forward it to the Plan Commission for further review. Does anyone have any questions? Was this already, did it already go to the Plan Commission?
So, the preliminary process was completed. This is the final plat and final PUD process, and it is going to the Plan Commission, yes. And just- Did you tell us how this differs from how, when it was brought to us before? I was just gonna say, for the record, it is in substantial compliance with the preliminary plans that you approved last July.
The commercial lots are the same size?
Yeah, everything is the same, yes.
So, the underpass is still there as well?
The train under, the bike, walking underpass.
Yes, yes, that is all on the plan.
Any other questions from the committee? And we will forward this to the Plan Commission for further review. The next item on our agenda is municipal code Title 10 zoning ordinance, Chapter 13, administrative and enforcement. Attached is a proposed text amendment to the municipal code Title 10 zoning ordinance that repeals the existing Chapter 13, administration and enforcement in its entirety, and adds the new Chapter 13 as drafted. This new chapter creates the Planning and Zoning Commission and outlines all of its duties and powers while abolishing the existing Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals. The Zoning Board of Appeals reviewed the proposed text amendments, conducted the required public hearing for the meeting on February 3, 2022. The Zoning Board of Appeals recommended approval. Does anyone have any questions on this item? Thank you for being here, gentlemen. So, we will forward this on to the Village Board for a vote. That's all we have under building and zoning. Thank you, Chairman Hopkins. Community Economic Development, Chairman Gansey?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one item. We have-
First, first, we gotta know where you're at and what the temperature is.
Yeah, it's nice.
Well, thank you for, thank you for making, thank you for making the effort to be on.
But I do miss being there in person. All right, thank you, Mr. President. So, we have one item. We have a VITA grant for the Dogfather. So, they've been a successful restaurant in Bartlett for over 15 years. Mr. Posaro has been an active member of the community, sponsoring many events, and was recently inducted into the Vienna Beef Hall of Fame. He's updating his business sign to an LED sign this spring. The quote was for $4,217, and the Economic Development Commission is recommending a 50% VITA grant and the amount of $2,021 once the sign is completed and proof of payment is submitted. Are there any questions?
Oh, let's run this through. Tony, I saw on the news that there's a Chicago Heights, the news wasn't out of ours, but there's a Chicago Heights place that was, you, you had yours in 15, they were in business for 25 years. They just showed it on the news today. They're in the Vienna Hot Dog Hall of Fame. Ah, it went, it traveled around here, that's all that counts, yeah. It'll always be number one in Bartlett. I don't have any questions.
All right, so we'll forward this request to the Village Board for a kind of vote.
Perfect. Are you putting in a new sign, is that what it is? Fantastic. Thank you, Chairman Gansey.
Gonna shuffle up.
That does it for the Economic Development Committee. Thank you, Chairman Gansey. Finance and golf, Chairman Danny? You're all good. Thanks, Tony.
If anyone wants to leave-
Ray can help you with the sign if you need.
I'd be glad to. Mr. President, the next item we have on our agenda is finance and golf. It's the 2022 through 2023 proposed budget review for police, planning and development and golf. And with that, we'll start with the-
Anybody left on the other side of the building?
Do we need a larger table?
Oh, my God.
Hey, Pete, Pete, get up there, they have more room for you.
How are, how are we supposed to vote no now? Very intimidating.
I think, Chief, are you asking for a lot, is that why you got?
It really sets the stage here.
I just hope all-
Hey, National Night Out, they get more stuff.
I just hope all of you don't have to speak.
No, hopefully not.
We, we try and teach people budgeting as they come up through their ranks, and so we have a lot of beginners and a lot of old timers on the, on the table tonight. So, we will begin budget review with police, and then we'll go to golf, and then hopefully we'll have time to get to planning and development services. So, Chief, I'll hand it over to you.
All right, great, thank you.
Just real quick, Chief, just before we get started in all the budgeting stuff, Paula and I did talk about this, planning and development and police usually go pretty long, so if anybody feels like, hey, let's just bump that to the next one, we can do that. All right? Okay, thanks, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees. As Paula said, our budget process is basically a conglomeration of work that's assigned at the beginning of our budget process to different supervisors of our command staff. And as Paula mentioned, a lot of them are in new positions or new supervisors. So, from start to finish, I wanted them to be part of the process as far as like succession planning and learning how it goes from start to finish, and we get to this point. So, thanks to my staff for all their hard work on putting the budget together. I'm gonna start with this infographic that Joey put together for each department. Thank you, Joey, for doing that. Target some of the highlights from our department over the past year. First of all, we're still working toward our next reaccreditation for Kalia. We're in year two of that web-based assessment process, and the assessor remotely reviews all of our files and our compliance with those files. So, this time, he looked at 127 standards, and after reviewing those, he found they were all in compliance, and literally said that they were some of the finest standards he ever reviewed. And that's a direct credit to our accreditation manager, Larry Pinsak. We're also very involved in giving back and philanthropy throughout the village. So, over the past year, our officers were involved in a toy drive, Christmas gifts for seniors at the township, food drives, diaper drives, and school supply drives, as well as activities supporting Special Olympics, being the torch run, polar plunge, roll for dough, and coffee with the champion. We welcomed Maverick to our department, he was sworn in on July 20. One of the big issues that I've been on my staff about combating is all of the dangerous driving activity that's been going on all over the past few years, and that's just not in Bartlett, but it's a national problem. So, we've really been focusing on our areas where we're seeing serious and fatal crashes, which have been the Route 59 and Route 20 corridors. And just this past year, in 2021, we made 508 total arrests for aggravated speeding. 462 of those were Class B misdemeanors, which is 26 to 34 miles an hour over the speed limit, and 46 of those were Class A misdemeanors, which is 35 miles an hour or more over the speed limit. I believe our highest speed that we registered was 104. And those 508 total arrests were a 27% increase over what we made in 2020. So, we went from 359 in 2020 to 508 in 2021.
Is it all age groups, Chief?
All age groups, yep. We saw a record number of retirements and department members leaving over the last year. In total, 15 department members either retired or left. We hired eight new police officers, promoted four officers to the rank of sergeant, and promoted one sergeant to the rank of commander. And currently, we are five officers down, we're swearing in three new officers on Thursday, and then we'll be two officers down. So, we're getting caught up. Community events, we're happy to see over the last year, we were able to start doing those again. So, we were active National Night Out, Fourth of July, Halloween Parade, and the Mary and Bright event around the holidays. And I'm happy to report that just today, we decided to bring back the open house for this year. So, it'll be the first open house in the new police department, and that's gonna occur on April 24 in conjunction with the Lion's Pancake Breakfast. We won third place for the Illinois Traffic Safety Challenge, mostly due to those driving offenses we were targeting that I mentioned earlier. That's the first time ever, I think, that our department won an award for traffic enforcement through Traffic Safety Challenge, and we're in a category of police departments with 51 to 65 officers. We were rated the fifth safest community of small towns in the U.S., and that was by cost of crime per capita, so we're happy about that. And then, our department was recognized by the National Association of Town Watch for our 2021 National Out Celebration, and as you know, we were awarded first place. And I think, Mayor, you asked how many times we've gotten first place. That was the eighth time that the village has earned first place for the National Out Celebration. But as, as nice as it is to get those accolades, it's more important to build the relationships with the community. And I think that's what we've all seen over the years, is the officers and the residents getting out and talking to each other, and it's really been a big benefit to our, to our community and police department since we started doing that. So, moving on to the budget highlights, our budget for 2023 has increased by 4%, and that's mainly attributed to adding two additional police officers, as well as some increased DUCOM fees, insurance premiums, and pension obligations. The addition of the two officers will enable the department to increase its minimum staffing of patrol shifts, hopefully when we get full staffed. And that's the final step of the hiring plan that I proposed to the Village Board prior to the 21, 2021 budget. Part of that was to get us through all of these retirements that we had projected would happen, and then the rest is to increase the minimum staffing. The budget also includes requests to utilize $65,500 in equitable sharing funds for the following expenses. In our capital budget, you'll see 17 iPads and accessories for command staff totaling $30,600. What those will primarily be used for is utilizing them at meetings, but also in our EOC, when we have to activate our emergency operations center, we only have two computers that people can use. So, we'll use the iPads so people can access documents, email things back and forth, access the internet, and that's really gonna improve our ability to manage critical incidents in the EOC. We're also looking at establishing a new interface to the FBI for $15,000. Our old provider had the same records management system as us, that was Northwest Central Dispatch, so we were able to kind of piggyback on their system and go through their system. They just switched over all of their records management systems and CAD to a new provider, so we lost that connection. So, we have to have a new connection to the FBI. And then, in professional development, I'd like to send two senior, two commanders to the Senior Management Institute for Police. One new item that we're gonna be requesting this year is the addition of seven license plate readers. We'd like to install these cameras around the entrances and exits to our village to assist in investigating and solving crimes. The cameras don't retain any personal information related to registered owners or possible drivers of vehicles. Instead, they allow us to search by date, time, and location, as well as make, color, and type of vehicle. Moving on to our progress toward the short-term goals, for routine goals, one of the main highlights I wanna focus on here is, over the past couple of years, we've been offering Citizen Police Academy classes. Last year, we offered two. We did not do a teen Citizen Police Academy class because school was mostly remote. So, we're looking at doing another teen Citizen Police Academy class in the coming weeks, so we're in the process of setting that up right now. And that's really a demographic that we're striving to reach out to, to build relationships with. Enhancing community events, as I mentioned, we're seeking to host that open house on April 24. Maintaining or enhancing village standards for delivery. We wanna continue using the Frontline software program. We use that for overnight parking requests, vacation house, watchhouse checks, and then directed patrols regarding traffic complaints, and then condition reports like streetlights out. And I included the statistics from the last year that we found in Frontline. For long-term goals, as far as examining service delivery and methods and approaches, we got some staff certified to teach the Police Executive Research Forum's ICAT course. ICAT stands for Integrating Communication Assessment and Tactics, and that's going to help us better address mental health-related calls. We also have been working with Public Works on the new disaster app for improving efficiency and coordination in responding to disasters. And another big one, you know, trustee McCarthy and Chief Cabrenia talked about the relationship with, between our departments, and that's really improved, I think, since Chief Cabrenia came on. And we've made a big commitment toward working together, not only on critical incidents, but also training together to be able to better handle those incidents. And one of the things we've been working toward is an active shooter response situation called Rescue Task Force Training. So, we've been doing that over the past few years, and we're doing the final element of that this summer. So, that is a big advantage that we'll have in the village here. As far as complex goals, developing a strategy to identify and complete roadway improvement and traffic mitigation programs and designs. We continue to get complaints around schools, usually within inclement weather, because they're all designed as walking schools, and in those inclement weather situations, everybody wants to drive their kids to school. So, Centennial and Sycamore Trails were two of the schools we dealt with this year with some of those issues. And we anticipate in this next year, having to come up with some ideas to mitigate situation at West Bartlett and 59 during the construction and redevelopment of that intersection. Other highlights, we formed a partnership with Elgin Community College to offer internship opportunities to students. So, one of the things we encourage them, or said we were interested in was minority students and female students to come on and do an internship with our police department, and we had, I think, three or four come through last summer, so that was a nice addition. Those are unpaid internships, but they are able to get some experience and exposure to a police department, especially if they're looking at a potential career in law enforcement. On to the police summary page. As far as increases here, you'll see the increase in police officers from 48 to 50 to account for the two new officers we're asking for. Those are the only increases in staffing that we're seeking. And then, as far as our activity measures, pretty much everything went up, and I think that's attributed to everything kind of opening back up again after COVID. So, our services went up, our fences went up, court cases went up. Traffic enforcement, I already talked about, we saw a lot of that. Our training hours increased. One of the big ones we're seeing is these FOIA requests. So, it went from 1,380 in 2122 to 1,449 in 22 and 23, and it's not just the number of FOIA requests that we're getting, it's the scope. When we're getting them, especially from attorneys, they're asking for everything, everything we have, all documents, video, audio, and that is a big process, especially when it comes to a fire and how many vehicles we had out there, and they're all running the MVRs, and it's just gonna get more complicated, I think, once we get body cameras, and then we have all that extra video too. So, this is something we're working toward. We're in the process of trying to find out a fix for making it easier for redactions of the videos, because there's hours and hours and hours of video, and we don't have really a good software redaction. So, we found a company that is gonna allow us to do that on a month-to-month basis as needed for a nominal fee, but that takes up a lot of time. Next page is the personnel request detail, where you'll see the request for the two new police officers. Again, we're hoping that once we realize all these officers and they get out of training, that the patrol shifts will be fully staffed, and we can increase our minimum patrol staffing levels. Onto the capital budget, you'll see that we're requesting to replace two patrol vehicles this year. Both vehicles are five years old, they'll both have over 100,000 miles, both of them have had maintenance issues, and they meet the criteria on the Vehicle Replacement Guideline form. One is rated at a 37, and high priority replacement is anywhere 28 or higher, and the other one is rated at a 38. The next item is that ID Network's RMS link to the FBI, that's how they get our, all of our data that we have, are required to report to the FBI, that's $15,000, and that is a new request. We're requesting to replace a speed trailer, it is broken and unable to be repaired, so that is $11,000. Number four is the license plate readers. It's a yearly contract per reader, seven, we're asking for seven of them at $2,500 So, we had some issues in town this year that if we had cameras and they were in the right place, we might have been able to capture and solve some incidents. One was the fatal crash on Lake Street where a pedestrian got hit, it was a hit-and-run, and we didn't have any information other than it might have been a white vehicle, and we had a piece of a headlight from it. So, if we had a camera up on Lake, Lake Street, and it caught a vehicle with a license plate, or we saw that it didn't have a headlight, we could search by color, we can search by make, we can search by model, we could search by license plate. So, that may have been beneficial there. We had the shooting over in the townhomes off of Harbor Terrace, so if we had a camera in that area, we could have captured it there. But one of the benefits of going with the vendor we're looking at is, there's a lot of other communities in our area that are also going with that vendor, and there is an opportunity to share information. So, even though one of our cameras may have not picked it up, a camera in another town may have picked it up. And we're able to search that, as long as they give us permission, we can all search each other, others' cameras for the data that we're looking for. So, I think they can be very beneficial in helping us stay one of the safest communities in the United States, but also helping us solve crimes that occur.
How'd you identify where these seven would go? The seven-
So, we took a look, we took a look at some of the locations that we thought they might be most beneficial at. Like I said, we, I mentioned the exits and entrances to the village. So, Carol Stream last week presented at their budget meeting, they are getting cameras. What we wanna do is coordinate with the other agencies where their cameras are at and put ours in different locations, so we can get more bang for the buck. So, as far as the locations go, the proposed locations right now, and this could change, would be Lake Street and Park Boulevard, Sterns Road in Newport, Route 59 and Army Trail Road, Lake Street and Naperville Road, West Bartlett Road and Route 25, Devon Avenue and Newport Boulevard, and Sterns Road and South Bartlett Road. Now, part of that process is we have to get permits to mount, because it's a pole-mounted system, and it's got a solar, small solar panel attached to it, but we have to get permits to put them on county right-of-way or state right-of-way, so the vendor would seek those permits. In the meantime, during the process it takes to get those permits, they would install them in a location where we already have the right-of-way, in a village area. So, they would mount them there until we got the permit from either the county or the state, and then they would move them for free to those locations. There are currently 89 Illinois clients for the company we're looking for. Some of the most local agencies include Barrington Hills, Bensonville, Bowling Brook, Burr Ridge, Cary, DuPage County, DuPage County Forest Preserve, Glendale Heights, Kane County Sheriff's Office, Libertyville, Lombard, McHenry, Naperville, Oakbrook Terrace, Palatine, South Barrington, Vernon Hills, and Villa Park. Hanover Park is looking at them, as I mentioned, Carol Stream got them approved in their budget the other night, and South Elgin did as well. So, there's a lot of communities around us that have them, and one of the articles that I read is, even in communities that have a high crime rate, once the cameras go up and people know they're there, the crime rate has gone down, because it's that deterrent effect of the risk of getting caught. So, I think it could be a benefit to our village.
If they get vandalized, does the company pay for them, or do we have to pay for them?
The company owns them, so they would come out and replace it.
So, who has access to the data, and how long is the data stored?
So, I believe the data is stored for 30 days. Flock is the company we're looking at going with, they own the data, and then we, as a police department, have the option of letting other departments view our data, and they have the option of whether or not to allow us to view their data.
Within those 30 days?
Within those 30 days.
Okay, so, is this information that would be shared with any other intergovernment? I mean, you're talking about other, like Carol Stream, right? Streamwood? Any other government agencies?
It depends on how we set it up. So, you can open it up to any law enforcement agency in the area, or you can do it on a case-by-case basis, where someone would have to reach out to our department and say, can we have access to your data, and then we would grant it. So, it's, depending on our comfort level and how we wanna set that up.
So, it's not open to Homeland Security or?
I'd have to get that answer for you, I don't know about federal agencies like that, but I could find that out.
Thank you.
I have a question for you on it. What, what do these cameras look like in size, capacity, and how are they mounted, or where are they mounted?
So, if you've seen our radar boxes that are pole-mounted, it's smaller than that. The camera is about this size, and then there is a, I've got, I brought photos, because I kind of anticipated you might-
My concern is, like, if you go to the city of Chicago, they have a red or a blue beacon light on it and a camera. I just wanted to see if it's the same type of setup, or is it a smaller self-contained unit?
It's, it's fairly small and inconspicuous, I would say. The biggest part of it is the solar panel.
And it's just grabbing the license plate, that's the primary function of this?
Grabbing the license plate, the color of the car, the make of the car, the model of the car, and then the date, time, and location that it passes through the camera. So, what you're getting now is you're getting a picture of what one of the cameras looks like installed on a pole. Also, there's a picture of the solar panel, and then DuPage County is mapping all of the communities that have license plate readers right now, as well as ones who are projecting to get license plate readers, and that's the other document that you're seeing. So, as you can see, there's a lot of them that are either already in place or projected to be in place.
How many vendors offer this in the state of Illinois?
I don't know how many, off the top of my head.
But you feel comfortable with this vendor?
Yeah, so, there's a couple benefits to going with this one. One is, most of the police departments around us are going with it. If we go with another vendor, we can't share information with that, you know, you can't, the vendors don't talk to each other. And then, the Flock system that we're looking at, we are looking at going to Axon body cameras and in-car cameras for our squad cars. There is an option to have these LPRs as part of the in-car camera system in the squad cars, and Axon is partnering with Flock for that. So, it would all be part of one system if we decided we wanted our squad cars to have them as well.
Owns the cameras, does that mean that they pay for them when the drunk runs over one with the truck?
I believe they do. I, I'll find out the exact answer on that, but they own the cameras, we just have a contract to access the data.
Do they install them in this price?
They do install them. And like I said, if we have- And like I said, if we have to put them on the village right-of-way, and then they get a permit for state or county, they'll move them for free and reinstall them.
I think it could be an extremely helpful tool for you guys.
I think it could be.
Do you think these being mounted are gonna deter people speeding and reduce speed because they think they're being, you know, have a camera on them? Do you think it'll help curtail some of the speeding issues?
I doubt it. I mean, I think it's pretty widely known that the only place that is allowed to have speed-related cameras right now is the city of Chicago or construction zones for the state police. So I don't know that, I mean, people think that the cameras on the top of the traffic light standards are video cameras, but they're not. They're just the sensors for the intersection. So I don't think people would think that. If there's no more questions, I'll move on to the next. So we're looking to replace two automatic external defibrillator units. This is replacing, actually, we're replacing four CR2 AEDs. We're replacing four older AEDs that we can't get batteries for anymore. And one of the things I've always reported over the past few years when we've been replacing these is how many AED saves we've had. So since 2015, our AEDs have been deployed numerous times. Sometimes they don't advise us, in shock, sometimes they do. But since 2015, we've saved 12 lives with AEDs. In 2021, we had one. In 2020, we had one. In 19, we had two. In 18, we had two. In 17, we had two. In 16, we had two. And in 15, we had one. So they've been very beneficial regarding our officers' response to critical medical situations. Part of that also is we need two AED training units. Those are $550 apiece. Number seven, GrayKey is a software service we're looking to purchase. It seems like every crime right now has some type of cellphone-related data. So this GrayKey service will allow us to utilize cellphone forensics. Number one, it allows us to unlock iPhones if we get a warrant, or we have a deceased victim where they have a password-protected phone and we can't get into it. This would allow us to get into those phones to get valuable information, help us solve a case. But it also allows us to extract the data and to view all the data on those phones. So again, that's a contract for one year of service. Number eight is iPads for the command staff that I referred to. Those will be funded out of the equitable sharing funds, and will be used during EOC operations, as well as meetings regarding notes. And then number nine is we're seeking to replace two of our police bicycles with power bikes. We bought two power bikes a year ago, and they allow us to get out into neighborhoods easier. The officers can load them onto the back of their squad cars, and then if they get a call in another area, the power assist on the bikes allows them to get back to their squads quickly, put the bike on the squad, and then respond to the incident. We recently sent out community surveys in the Bart Letter, and we've always got it active on our website. But that's one of the requests in the comments that I've seen from residents, is for officers to get out of their cars more and interact with people in the neighborhood. That's one way that our officers will be able to do that. So that's it for our capital budget. Moving on to our professional development detail. We are seeking to send an officer to Traffic Reconstruction School. That's, again, part of our succession planning. Some of our officers who have had that certification have retired or are going to be retiring in the next couple of years, so we're trying to get some more people trained with that. Our Kalia Conference is going to be in Chicago this year, so we're gonna send a deputy chief and our accreditation manager to that. The Illinois Homicide Investigators Association Conference, we're looking to send eight investigators to that, and part of that conference, they get recertified as a homicide investigator. They have to keep that certification up. On the next page, the International Association of Police, Chiefs of Police Conference, that's in Dallas. We're gonna look to send the chief, deputy chief, and two commanders to that. The Ipele Conference, we've got a lot of benefit out of regarding labor relations and labor law, so we're gonna look to send two command staff members to the annual conference in Galena, and then also command staff members to the annual employment law seminar. Actually, there's one coming up Friday that we're all going to. One of the new things we're asking for is for four honor guard members to attend the Illinois Police Officer Memorial. We did that several years ago, and then we've got several new members of our honor guard now. We'd like to get them down there to the memorial. Also, we're sending an officer to Crisis Negotiators Association Conference. One of our detectives, Stephanie Navarro, just got certified as a hostage negotiator, and so she is part of a team on DuPage Merit, and so she has to go to this conference regarding that. The next one is for our officer who's assigned to the DEA. She's required to go to this Drug, Terrorists, and Criminal Interdiction Conference in Nashville in June. The next category on the next page is our leadership and management courses. So we're looking to send a new sergeant to a 10-week Staff and Command course through Northwestern University. And then we're looking to send two new sergeants to the Supervision of Police class through Northwestern University, which is a two-week course. The higher management levels, command and upper, eligible to attend the Police Executive Research Forum Senior Management Institute for Police. And I'd be looking to send two commanders to that and utilize equitable sharing funds for that expense. On the next page, one of the big expenses, as always, is the Police Training Institute Basic Academy fees. We're anticipating potentially seven positions at $6,100 per recruit, totaling $42,700. In the past couple of years, I had been budgeting equitable sharing funds to be used for this because I Let's Be, the Illinois Law Enforcement Training Standards Board, was not reimbursing academy fees like they had in the past. So now that they started reimbursing the academy fees, we're just gonna use regular budget funds for that, because they won't reimburse if we use our federal equitable sharing funds. Another thing we're looking to expand is the number of drug recognition experts that we have. So we currently have three, one detective, two patrol officers. We're trying to get one patrol officer on every shift certified as a drug recognition expert. And that's pretty much it for professional development. As far as professional association goes, not much changed here. The major change was to Merit, which is DuPage County's major crimes team. So that went from $4,000 to $6,500 for a $2,500 increase. That was really the only thing that had a substantial change this year. And then moving on to our line item. Regular salaries increased 4%. A lot of that is due to adding the two new officers. Our employee group insurance saw a 9% increase. Vehicle setup went down 34%, because we're seeking to purchase fewer vehicles, so there's less vehicles to set up. Our subscriptions and publications decreased 20% because we canceled a subscription we no longer needed. We took a good look at postage, because over the past few years, we've been dealing with expungements and other things like that, and so we adjusted that based on the amount we've actually been spending. It didn't, we used to send out a lot of things by certified mail, too, which is a significant expense, and we no longer had to send some of the local adjudication stuff out using certified mail, so we saw a reduction in fees. So we adjusted our postage expenses from $15,000 to $6,000, so that was a 60% savings In professional development, we saw a 7% increase. Again, that's for those police academy fees that had previously been budgeted to equitable sharing. Safety program expenses went up about $4,000. That's a 26% increase, because we are seeking to buy some infant mannequins for CPR training. And then we also have to pay for CPR licenses for our staff and for the crossing guards, which we didn't have to pay for in the past. Our prisoner detention, we see a 40% decrease there. We just reduced it based on the amount we've been spending over previous years. Our Police and Fire Commission has a 30% increase, because we have to run a police test this coming spring. In fact, applications are available right now. And then I increased our contingencies, because with everything going on, many departments in our area have seen lower numbers of people interested in becoming a police officer, so they're running through their list pretty fast. So we may need to run a second test. And we also opened up that lateral testing process. So in the event we run through that, it gives us a little bit of ability to pay for another test, whether it's a regular or lateral test. Our equitable sharing was down 54%, and then our transfer to police pension is up about 7% due to increased pension obligations. And as I mentioned, overall, it's a 4% increase in our budget. As far as our line item justification goes, nothing really changed with service agreements. My rentals went up a little bit, as did computer services. Part of computer services, a new item, is our iNet Viewer license fees. In the past, DuPage County ETSB paid for those licenses, and now they pass those fees on to us. So that's just a slight increase there. In DUCOM, the DuPage ETSB is replacing all of the police and fire radios this year. They're at end-of-life, 10 years, so that's all the portable radios that we wear on our hips, as well as the radios that are in our EOC and records section. They're paying for most of it. The only cost we have to pay for would be, like, battery chargers, bank battery chargers, and our CSO, potentially our CSO radios. So what the DuPage State Attorney's Office is doing is they are reviewing everything and rule, they will issue a ruling on whether community service officers are considered first responders. If they're not considered first responders, we would have to be on the hook for most of this four-year fee of $25,332, which they'll let us pay back over four years, so that's where you see the $6,335. But what I anticipate is that the state's attorney is gonna rule that CSOs are first responders, and that would substantially reduce the number that we have to pay. I think for the bank battery chargers, it's about $1,000 for those. So hopefully, we won't be on the hook for most of those fees. Supplies on the pistol range, we've got some range maintenance that we added for $1,000, and the rest of that, about $4,500 increase, is due to increased ammunition fees. When we order our ammunition, it's taken around a year from the time we order to actually get it. There's a very, very short supply of ammunition, and that's why the cost has gone up as well. We reduced the amount of gasoline we were projecting to utilize, based on past usage, but with the cost of gasoline where they're at now, I don't think anyone anticipated where that's going, so hopefully, it comes back into line soon. As I mentioned, postage went way down based on what we were using. Our safety program expenses went up a little bit due to the purchase of the mannequins and the CPR cards. And then the Police and Fire Commission fees went up based on the police tests that we're holding. So unless you have any other questions, that is it for the police department.
As far as fuel goes, did we ever have a gas station at Public Works for the police department to fill up?
We did. We had a gas station at Public Works. We're not, only the police department filled up, but Public Works filled up, the fire department filled up, Hanover Township filled up. But I think the issue was the cost of maintaining the underground tanks and things like that. So what we're part of right now is a part of something called WEX, and there is a state agreement, I think, that covers the fuel fees. So it was more beneficial to become a part of that than have to maintain and purchase all of our own gasoline at Public Works.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Chief.
The next one would be golf.
I think, I think, are we doing?
Yeah, let's get golf out of here. Presentation's gonna be short.
Oh, the old guy. You gotta swim there.
I know.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The old dog.
Oh, I know what you're saying.
Yeah. Just so you know, if we don't finish with Roberta tonight, we'll have to start at 6:00 next time. So if you do golf and Roberta.
Good evening, Mayor and Board, and thank you for allowing the three-headed monster at the golf course here to present our budget to you. As you know, we do our budget a little differently. I am responsible for the golf portion of the budget. Paul Peterson, our food and beverage director, does the food and beverage part, and Matt Girmack, our superintendent, handles grounds part. I will touch on some of the golf highlights relatively quickly here, and then hand it over to these gentlemen. We did see a, we're anticipating a 6% revenue increase in golf revenues this upcoming season. Couple of highlights, we do about 12,000 resident, Barlet resident rounds every year. Biggest highlight we had last year, honestly, was COVID restrictions going away and allowing us to operate the golf course more in a normal fashion as opposed to 2020. We were able to return to doing our golf outings, hosting the Rotary, the Chamber, Barlet Lions Club, as well as hosting all the U46, Barlet High School and South Elgin High School. Another highlight, one of the big things last year was a purchase of a new golf simulator at the golf course. Along with that came a golf shop renovation, where we were able to make a nice deal with Adidas Golf Company to become our primary clothing vendor. They did a great job sending us display materials and giving us discounts on product. We also did a golf shop renovation in coordination with fitting that simulator in there, and another shout-out to Public Works, that they did the construction on that and saved us quite a bit of money there. Going forward and to, we have no personnel requests in golf. Professional development and professional association are gonna remain essentially the same. Our capital, in capital budget for golf, I am requesting a new credit card automated driving range machine for our range. Our existing machine is several years out of date and is taking several times a day to run down there and check on the machine. It's an older machine with a coin mechanism, where the coin slides down a little machine and has to hit a tripwire. Our new machine will allow us to, customers to purchase range balls with credit card and also purchase bulk balls. So the golf courses that have gone to this machine have seen about a 20% increase in range revenues over time. With that being said, my, if you have any questions on line items or anything like that, feel free, I'll turn it over to Paul.
Well, Matt, oh, okay, you're going to Matt. No questions? All right. Good evening, Mayor and Board. I will be going over the grounds budget tonight. If you have any questions, feel free to stop me at any time, and I will be happy to answer them. We will start with the grounds personnel requests, and we have none, so next page. The next page is capital outlay requests. Our first item is for a greens roller. It is part of our Vehicle Replacement Fund. Our current unit is from 2007 and has exceeded its life expectancy by four years. It has a total of 5,500 hours on the unit. There is a formula you can use to convert machine hours to, like, miles per, or like your miles on your car, and it comes out to roughly, the 5,500 hours comes out to, like, 300,000 miles on your car. So the machine has been through a lot of hours and miles and usage, so it's getting costly to repair. Bearings and the rollers are breaking, and the hydraulic hoses are starting to need repair, so the cost to repair is starting to get expensive for the unit. And then it just has some really good agronomic health benefits to the grass. It promotes smooth putting surfaces and increases the green speeds, which golfers really enjoy. Faster greens gets around, the word of mouth. And then it also can reduce our algae and dollar spot disease, so hypothetically, hopefully, we can use less fungicides, so it's more environmentally friendly for the golf course, which is always nice. No questions? No questions?
Do you guys have like a unit like that that needs a lot of repair? Do you guys have a mechanic on staff that fixes a lot of it, or do you have to bring in outside?
Yeah, we have Dennis, who's our mechanic, who is a very handy man. He can fix a lot.
He's a miracle worker. He's created.
I call him the wizard.
Yeah.
Is it rare?
That's on the greens roller. I, in twenty-five years, Matt got to demo that greens roller last year from Toro and hit it out there for, what, about six weeks?
I had about, no, I had about a week.
Well, we never had so many people come in and tell us how good the greens were when you were, when you were, really got a lot of compliments.
It also allows us to use the mowers less. You can get away with mowing one day, rolling the next day, so your machine hours, you get less wear and tear on your machines, you're splitting up the wear and tear, so.
So it's going to last longer?
Yeah, we hope. But yeah, the golfers really love the fast greens and it seems to work out really well. The next page is professional development. We have a small decrease from last year's budget, so that's good. The next page is professional association detail. It's the same as last year. There are no changes. Then line item detail, we have an increase of three percent. Some of the bigger ones would be automotive supplies, just due to the rising price of gasoline and diesel. Tree man's material, up twenty-five percent. We're still working on removing some of the larger silver maples around the greens, and they're so close to the greens, we need the company to come in and kind of bring them down from the top and drop them and do them safely so they don't damage the golf course. And building and grounds improvements is an increase of four hundred percent. We're kind of doing, hoping to do some new landscaping around the clubhouse. And then the larger number would be for rebuilding some of the older bunkers on the golf course. They're thirty years old, the oldest bunkers. Their life expectancy is roughly ten, ten years. So the oldest ones are past their time. So we're hoping to kind of start rebuilding the oldest ones first in-house, working with a contractor, do some of the shaping to reduce the prices.
Never knew there was a life expectancy on a bunker.
Oh, yeah. Car paths have life expectancies, everything out there.
Wow.
And just tears them up.
That's, that's it, unless you guys have any questions for me?
Questions for Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, trustees and mayor, for letting me do the food and beverage aspect of the golf operation. A big thank you to these guys for being such great people to work with and to get the golf course in such good condition to, for us to go ahead and be able to look out our windows and see that every day from the banquet facility. I want to jump right back to the little stuff at the very beginning again. I want to comment on the fact we're so happy that it'll be the first year without any COVID restrictions for two years in a row. So some actual numbers can go ahead and go through and, banquets especially, we're looking for a twenty-one point five percent increase over what we're estimating to do this year. We're going to see record midway and beverage cart sales going through. Our big struggle for the last couple of years has been staffing. The lack of staff is real. The wages you need to pay is real, lack of food and food prices, supply chain, it's all there. So just functioning, going through events were probably the most difficult thing we've done for the couple of years. Marketing, everything, they're coming back because we've done well, but we spent a lot of time trying to make it through events. We did do the best of the not award. Thank you, Ray, for picking that out, and the second time for the Hall of Fame. We got forty-five winnings on the book coming up, twelve more than the previous year. And normally, at budget time, I can tell you fourteen for the next year, and we're at sixteen, so we're a couple ahead of normal going forward.
You mentioned all those increases in costs.
Yes.
Obviously, are we translating that into what we charge?
Yes. We're about fifteen percent up going into the clubhouse with the menu. We did a three percent increase and another eight percent increase in banquets. That's going to be a year down the road to finally do all that, almost to realize those differences because of the fact so much is booked already. But we'll be aggressive with that going forward again as we see how the prices go through the year.
Well, did you add a full-time staffer? Is that why regular salaries went up?
We didn't really, we just reclassified a person in the kitchen that's Dustin's assistant that really has been operating as a sous chef. Because of our lack of staff, he's the same person that's on, same benefits and everything else. He's just going to go salary instead of hourly to account for the fact that we have no hourly staff to go ahead and do it. So he's kind of our catch-all. That's why that went up higher. We didn't really add anybody, though. You know, going back, capital outlay under the golf program are really items that we brought up. One of the restroom renovations, it's in there for twenty thousand dollars. We did a nice job updating the bridal suite a couple of years ago, and that's been a big part of getting people to go ahead and book. People spend the day in there doing their hair and dresses and sometimes show up nine, ten in the morning and spend the whole day. They go through this restroom that's in there that's twenty-five years old with yellow partitions that are, they're cracking and it's tiled. It just doesn't match, it just doesn't match. So for this amount, we're talking about to change the whole thing, upgrade it, get rid of the outdated decor. And this is for the men's room, the ladies' room, and to upgrade the midway somewhat also.
Is there anything else, is there anything else that people, a reason that they don't book with Bartlett Hills that you feel like you could add to your budget? I know you just mentioned like the rest, the bathrooms. Is there anything else that people have mentioned if they said, no, no, thank you, this isn't for me because of this?
Probably the only, probably the most, it's a big deal for us to be able to host an event and have a ceremony on site at the same time, so that everyone's there at the same time. And there's no driving, there's no downtime between pictures and everything. Probably the biggest thing that people would say is they would like to see some kind of outdoor area that they could hold a ceremony that's not necessarily on the veranda, overlooking the golf course, but someplace where you could have a tent or a real gazebo or something that, and the golf course is very close to the building, but that's probably one of the most common things you hear, is a separate space to go ahead and do that.
So what prevents us like from doing like a pergola or something small like that?
You could go over that veranda. They're looking for something sitting on the grass in the golf course. Some courses close their, close a hole down or something in the middle of the afternoon on a Saturday or Sunday, and maybe move the tees up a little bit and use that as a background to go ahead and have a wedding ceremony. That's not always an easy thing to do because we do have a lot of golf traffic on the weekends, but some courses get around it that way.
We would not want to interrupt Ray's golf.
Yeah.
We could do the ceremony in the simulator, though, right?
Yeah, right.
There you go.
You could change the background.
Right, that's one of the problems.
Make it a beach.
In fact, I know that they've actually even had staff go out to take pictures around the eighteenth green, and then the golfers are coming to the tee box and they have to hold up and whatnot. So it's rather difficult to go out in a course when you have a full round of people out there playing golf.
And the other thing probably would be a separate area for someone to have a ceremony and then a little extra area to go ahead and have their cocktail party, and then exit into the reception hall instead of having it all in one room, but we simply don't have the space to go ahead and do that.
When you were talking about remodeling on the washroom, did you anticipate any potentially looking at touchless or, you know, water and soap and that? I've been seeing that when you're out of the trap.
Yeah, we've talked about all that, and the specifics of the hardware and everything going through, we're going to upgrade the LED lighting and touchless, everything would be certainly better, is what you see all over the place right now. But hardware on the sinks and hardware through the, all the restrooms and everything, that's all going to be part of it.
Thank you.
The second part of it is a circulation pump in the basement. It's passed its life expectancy by seven years. It's failed several times this winter. It controls all the heat in the basement, so you can't have curling contests downstairs. So if that goes down, then it's going to be some pipe issues. So that's planned for the fall before the winter gets bad, and the restroom renovations would be over the winter sometime during the slow period. Specifically, restaurant is next. We're really not asking for any personnel for capital outlay. Professional development is just Basset and food handling, food service sanitation, certifications for management. No professional association under restaurant. I think we've already touched on the fact that regular salaries are up, but temporary are going to be down to kind of offset that for the most part. You're going to see in here, you're going to see supply costs, material costs, everything from gloves, masks, sanitation device, chemicals, everything went through the roof the last couple of years, and we haven't seen that start coming down yet. So hopefully, it gives us a little bit of relief going forward. Any questions about restaurant in there? The rest of the same items under banquet, you're going to see the same split between regular salaries and temporary. Under banquet, expense is really the same thing. And the last category is the midway, the little stand out there at nine holes that makes us about eighty thousand dollars a year through hot dogs and beer and everything else. And that with an expanded liquor menu and some food specials and everything else, that's turned into probably twenty, thirty thousand up from where it was three, four years ago as an average for, just for profit coming in. So that's a good sign. By that, that's about it for food and beverage, I believe.
Any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen, for being here this evening. And gentlemen, again, congratulations on the fourth straight year on the best not, the best of wedding not award. So thanks for being here.
And Matt, I expect smoother greens now, too.
You going to move into public works?
For somebody you don't know, they've already replaced, Public Works has already replaced one of the fan traps.
Yes.
They did it all.
An eighteen.
Almost all of it. We had to hire somebody to shape it, but how many times have you hit into it?
They did a great job. Kevin's right, the mayor's right. They took the back trap out and they rebuilt the.
You have five minutes.
Phil, Phil, Paul, Matt, I don't know if you have to hang around for the remainder of the budget meeting. You're done, aren't you? Okay, all right.
It seemed like Scott was going to join you, and then he ditched you.
Try and work with you, a little cooperation would be nice.
All right, planning and development. I'll start with the highlights, and I think one of our biggest highlights is the online permitting system that went live in April. It's been very well received and has kept our department actually very busy. I would like to thank the board for approving that in last year's budget because it has been really night and day in our department. It's unbelievable. The stacks of paper have just disappeared and overall has saved our department in office supplies, paper. It's just amazing. Part of the system, we instituted a new express permit that is issued in one to three days, and I can tell you that we have a record permit issuance of nine minutes. It went through so quickly that the person reviewing the permit application thought the person didn't pay because it processed, the payment was a little bit slower than the issuance of the permit, actually. And when we hit the refresh button, it showed that everything went through as it should. So nine minutes to issue a permit. Over the past year, we have reviewed over eighty-five million dollars worth of improvements, and our staff has collected over one point seven million dollars in fees. I have a more brewing update. Yesterday, they submitted the last two items that I was waiting for. Bob's already approved the plan, reviewed the plans, has a few minor changes. Our village attorney's reviewing the bond. And as soon as they give me the go-ahead, I'm issuing the permit.
All right.
Just from Brian's side, do I?
Bert, you're done. Just go issue it now.
I love it.
All right. So I'm hoping, I'm hoping in days. The second, four hundred thousand square foot building in Cook County was completed and has been leased to one entity, which is great. You heard the grasslands tonight, they're moving forward, it's coming through, two hundred and thirty-one units. Eastfield, you know, they've completely sold out. They've been, construction's been at a rapid pace, it's been unbelievable. We set a record year for inspections with over eighty-three hundred. Bartlett Station, you approved that with ninety units for an apartment complex. I have an update on the Bartlett Automotive Mall that went through expeditiously through the zoning process. They submitted civil engineering plans this week because they know that takes the longest to review, and they need to do that to go through some of their state permits and get those signed off. And as soon as they get that through our review of the engineering, then they're going to submit architecturals. So that's coming on. Our adjudication cases have doubled over the last two years. We had updates to the twenty-twenty building code with the adoption of the swimming pool and spa code. And then finally, we have worked with the board on the creation of the new planning and zoning commission. And with that, our budget for planning and development services is proposed to increase by five percent. We are asking for a plan reviewer. You know, I don't have a joke like Todd usually gives, but I do have a trivia question. You had to guess what the number one permit is that we issue in our department, what would you say it was? Fence? Anybody else?
Patio. I'd like patio.
Fence.
Windows.
Windows.
Windows is number one, driveways is number two, and roofs is number three. And if you think about it, and you think about the trend that we're seeing with those types of permits, we are in a beginning, I believe, in a boom cycle again because thirty years ago was the time when we were at our housing boom. And now those houses are twenty-five, thirty years old, and they are doing these, what I would call upkeep, maintenance, routine permit projects, and we are busy. We are very busy with those. So it makes sense that our housing stock is aging. Non-residential, I've got, I've got three projects, I believe, coming in Brewster Creek Business Park. I've got four coming in Blue Heron Business Park. I've got possibly three coming in Southwind Business Park. And for new residential, you know, I've touched on, the grasslands is two hundred and thirty-one residential, the residents of Bartlett Station is ninety, and then I've got another residential rental development coming before the board in April with a hundred and twenty.
Is that located?
Schick and fifty-nine. So with all of this being said, and this proposed development, it's a lot, but it's a really good problem for the village. It's good. And hence, though, that's why we are asking for a new plan reviewer in the building division. You know, it's our goal to keep moving development forward, and in order to do that with all of this coming at us, I do feel that there is a definite need for a plan reviewer in our department.
Will the fees justify that position?
I would hope so, yes, yes.
But it's also a progressive thing where we need to replace somebody pretty soon, too. Well, there's obviously people that aren't going to be here forever, so you've got to get those people trained up.
And that's true. Building the bench is something that's important, especially in planning and development. One of the things that Bert and I have talked a lot about is, I think we were surprised at how, how much the workload had grown with the software program or the tracking program that we have for permits. People are seeing that they are now aware that they need those follow-up, close-out inspections. We're moving them much faster, we're running them through the process, and we don't want to be the person, or we don't want to be the person. or we don't want to be the problem in the system. We don't want to be the bottleneck. So that reviewer really helps us manage that workflow.
What level, what level position is this? Is this like entry, three years, five?
It would be below the Building Division manager position. So middle.
Middle.
Yeah. And it's a, we need a backup person when the Building Division manager is absent. We need somebody to answer the phones and to help answer questions at the window. We have no one to do that. And backup inspections, yes. So they are, they are needed.
Okay.
Does it free up your time to help developers as they come through the door?
Yes. And, and we need to currently, our planners are actually doing the open gov, managing the open gov permitting system. I need to shift that over to the building side so that the planners can get back to planning. Because right now, they're not, it's been a struggle. It's been very difficult.
I think when the word gets out that Bartlett moves permit processes along really fast, more developers are going to find our town desirable to build it. So that, along with the Plan Commission consolidation, I think is a huge step. So.
With the speed at which the PDS department is turning around permits, what would take some of our neighbors and surrounding communities two weeks to crank out? We do it in three days.
So I thought I would go into, Todd, could you put up that one slide just to show you? So I didn't want to go over the numbers of the activities that we do, but I wanted to show it to you graphically. So this is from our activities. You can see that our numbers over the last two years have gone up in permits, in the plan reviews, and in the inspections. So that was taken right off of our activity numbers out of our budget. On the, we're not asking for any equipment, capital outlay at this time. Our professional development is the same as last year. No changes have been made to that. And our professional associations is exactly the same as last year with one additional item known as the Code Official Safety Specialist Certification. This is actually a five-course certification recognized by the ICC for our two code officers for avoidance tactics, situational awareness, and de-escalation skills. So I think it would be very beneficial to them. Other than that, it's exactly the same as last year. Going over our line items, our salaries are going up as a result of the new plan reviewer request. Our service agreements went up slightly, 5%, with the online permitting system and a new copier service agreement. Our professional development went up. We have a biennial property maintenance conference that's in Madison for our code officers. Believe it or not, I actually attended this many moons ago. And it's a very good program in Madison. I highly recommend it. Our dues have gone, have gone up slightly due to the Code Specialist Certification being added. And then our largest increase is in our contingency fund. This year, we had an emergency cleanup of a vacant building that we have had issues with for many years. It rained and it flooded the basement. It was full of items in the basement. We had to have an emergency cleanup so that mold would not grow down there. And that was, their sump pump failed and we expended $9,000 for that. So we have a lien on the property. But that is primarily why I'm cautious for the future of other structures that may come our way, that we have to have a fund here that.
Down just four yards.
Yes. And what property was that?
That was the 677 Heather, right?
Yes, yes.
That had been a thorn in that neighborhood. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Bert. Why don't you talk a little bit about?
I missed the address. Was it a residential address?
Yes.
Yes, it's 677 Heather. And it's, it's been an ongoing problem for years. I'm happy to say, actually, just this week, they finally have registered their house as a vacant building. They've paid the fees for the registration. And they are reaching out to the staff now for the first time in about six years. Is this the house that we were working with last year where the, was all overgrown? That the neighbors were complaining? Yes. So I'm asking for additional funds in my contingency line item.
Makes sense.
Yes, yes, yes.
When we have hoarding situations, that's the fund that we take that out as well.
And it's also gone up because I have agreed to take on the recording fees from finance. They're not huge, but it's part of it, part of the increase. So with that, I think that's, if you have any questions?
Bert, I know we talked about some time ago, this wave. We've had a lot of conversations around it. But at one point, we were talking about contractually doing it. Tell us what the advantages and disadvantages of contracting out and training and then losing them and like for reviewers and stuff.
So we do.
It's all trustee Ranky's legacy situation.
So we do have, we have an emergency backup plan review with TPI just temporarily while our, when we didn't have a division manager. And Paul and I are going to talk about that.
So we use TPI. They're, what's the limit that we had with them, Bert? We had a $25,000, a $20,000 limit on the use of their services for plan review. They're helping with our stormwater certification program, using some outside help for that. When the township wanted us to expedite their review, you know, we're giving them, they're in another taxing district, so of course, we're giving them a break on their fees. And they wanted us to move faster. But we had a lot of development fees. Not all of them. Not all of them. Not all of them. Just Bert's. But they wanted us to go faster. We couldn't go faster. We had other projects ahead of them. And I said, "Well, if you want us to move faster, we can send them out and you can pay for it." But a lot of those reviews are, are, the cost for, well, not all, all of those, all of those costs that are associated with the outside plan reviews are passed on to the developers. We find that that, having them at our disposal during the crunch times really makes a difference for us. And I think Bert and I would like to make it a more permanent relationship.
So it's my understanding that the village has had a plan review consultant for many, many years. They typically are going to review the large industrial, commercial buildings that we get in the village. It's just too much for our staff. It's too time consuming. So we send all of those out. That's what we do. So that's always been our process.
What is there?
That is not changing. That is not changing. Our former, our former consultant retired, yes.
The manager is going to review plans for windows and pools and driveways and decks. But the big stuff is still going to be farmed out.
The big stuff still gets farmed out. Our division manager and this new position would split the plan reviews for all of the other type of permits. Deck permits actually take a long time to review, and we want to get it right. We don't want to rush those. We don't want to make a mistake. So all the other types of permits, some of the simpler ones, the express ones, can be reviewed even by our building inspectors. In the summertime, they are so busy, they barely have the time to return phone calls, let alone do a plan review. So this person is that backup for the division manager. Yes, we did. Who was the plan reviewer as well? We didn't have that position.
The costs for the expediting reviews are covered by the developer when you're sending them out to TPI, correct?
Yes.
Those have not impacted us financially.
That is correct. That is a past event.
Anyone else? All right, Mr. President, that's all we have. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the rundown on all of the new developments. That was very enlightening. All of the new real estate taxes coming into our village. What's the reason for the adjudication going up? The amount of cases in local adjudication?
So we've taken, the last two years, we've taken a little bit more aggressive stance on some properties that have dilapidated. And we're trying to up our enforcement on that.
Trustee Ganzey. How is Florida? Do you have any more questions?
Everything's great here. I'm good on the questions.
All right. Entertainer motion to adjourn. By trustee Danie, second by trustee Hopkins. The cooks please call the roll.
Trustee Danie?
Yes.
Ganzey?
Yes.
Ganzey?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Swansky?
Yes.
We are adjourned.